No, it needs to hold.
Where's the button?
Yeah.
The recording is on.
All right. Open the meeting. It's November, Monday, November 24th, 2025. First order of business, public comment. If anybody has a comment, please come to the podium, address your comments to the board and not to the audience, and then ask to the minutes. No takers. Regular business. Time to move straight ahead.
We can start with tax rate setting. Portal backup. And this is what we're looking at for preliminary rates.
Where am I?
Twenty seven sixty one.
Okay.
Increase is seven point one percent over last year for the dollar eighty four increase.
What's the percent of the increase in municipal?
I don't have that.
Well.
Uh, I don't care. I don't just pay that.
I understand, but visually, so, but we can control. We don't control all of it.
Can't control county, right?
Can't control county?
State.
We control it with our votes, but we don't control it personally.
Well, if you look at the tax rate from last year, I'll tell you.
I can go back and get you the tax rate from last year, but I can't show you both simultaneously.
This is twenty five seventy seven, but break it down.
Why would this be? Probably not because of.
Five twenty four.
Hmm, is that the same?
No, it's a little bit less.
That's the one for this one? Wait, hold on, hold on. Before you go, can we just take a picture? It said I'm telling you don't have to keep flipping here. It would be way easier here. There you go. Okay, I'm on it.
It's five forty five this year.
Five forty one. Ours is nine thirty.
Well, they have totals in. Do you see that? Are you sure you guys have been?
I have control over everybody else.
Supposed to be off.
Oh, okay.
So does that mean we ignore her or what do we do?
Yeah, so five forty five euro. Twenty something cents. School made up for that.
You think you made a difference, huh?
Andy, I don't know if you have this, but we're down to unsigned fund balances of like one point five million.
Right.
My understanding is around two million last time, so how did we get to the six, one, one million six hundred fifty five thousand?
Um.
I don't have that.
Well, it's not.
Explanation with me.
I don't know if that's an auditor thing. Can you find out?
I can certainly find out. Ethan will.
So basically, our unsigned fund balance is one million five hundred twenty five thousand nine hundred and sixty eight dollars. Our policy says we keep at least one point five million in there, so.
We're right on the cusp.
Yes, so.
There's no, there's nothing to move.
So in that particular field.
Why do we have, why is it one point five million? Like what, what do you mean?
Is our financial policy board has approved?
But we wrote it, so I was just trying to remember what the budget was.
Well, that's not, that won't necessarily cash, so.
They have to pay out of that thing regularly, right?
The school.
Just asking what the, what the, why, why one point five?
You don't have to be one point five.
But that was why I asked, what do I, we chose one point five. Was it arbitrary? Was there like reason we made it?
I think it was a conversation between the board and the town treasurer primarily.
Okay.
It was recommend, if I remember from before, there was recommended percentages that you could hold on to.
Yeah.
I forgot what this percentage is at this point.
It's on the back page. This percentage is six point three two percent. Minimum recommended is one point two. Maximum recommended is four point one million. Do you want to bottom my sheet again?
May I borrow your sheet for a moment, sir, since you're the only one that got it?
Yes, you may. Well, that's.
I can scroll down to that.
If you can.
Well, what you're saying, Scott, we don't have much room. We just have to say with what we have.
I'm not in favor of using any of the unsigned fund balance to use as the tax rate.
If you don't use it, what is it? I'm sorry. I saw you change it, then I did not follow the change in the number. So it increases it twenty something cents, is that what I saw?
Yeah, four cents. It goes to twenty seven fifty seven if you use the twenty five.
That is the rest.
Not much you can do, but if we had money in the unsigned, we'd be able to play with, but there's none either.
Well, it comes back to how do we go from two million down to one point six. I don't have that information based on the information that we got.
Just for curiosity's sake, I guess, at this point. Nope, I can definitely find out. I'll talk to you, Kat, and Ethan tomorrow. So what is it, five point?
Twenty. The overall tax rate is twenty seven sixty one at the moment.
Twenty seven sixty.
Increase of a dollar eighty four, seven point one percent.
The town side is up about twenty cents.
Yep. But once again, we send out the bills, so the next comes to us.
Well, we don't want to get tapped, yeah.
Yep.
Of course.
I think the only thing that went down was really the county. It was twenty thousand less, wasn't it? Something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
Everything else were all.
Because that's the tax rate.
So leave it with no offset hazards?
No.
Yeah, but they're.
There's nothing offset with.
So. Motion? I move to leave, to set the tax rate at twenty seven dollars and sixty one cents per thousand with a fiscal, no, is it calendar two thousand twenty five? Or is it cal, fiscal, fiscal?
I'm just.
I think it's calendar.
It'll be calendar.
Calendar. Do I have a second?
Yes. Second?
Reluctantly second. Any discussion?
What, did we know discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Reluctantly.
Reluctantly.
The only thing we do now is have control in the future budget.
Which doesn't.
Well, I'm, we're headed into a revow, so if values go up, the.
Well.
Rates should go down.
They won't go down.
It doesn't.
Won't do much here.
I look at the bottom line of my tax bill, not to say everyone makes it up, so.
Right. Okay.
Well, good.
The next order of business was the response to the RFP for a statistical update. I got several declinations to bid. I did get bids from Municipal Resources Inc. and Avatar Associates of New England. I have the breakdown, went through both of them. You have the rates. Avatar came in at a hundred and eleven thousand five hundred seventy six dollars. MRI came in at sixty nine thousand eight hundred and fifty. We have a little over seventy in the revow capital reserve funds.
Okay, is there vast differences in what these two companies are offering?
Not that I could delineate, no.
Difference about forty two thousand.
I meant in the goods, not the price.
Oh.
That would, it's something that would explain the difference.
Well, that's a lot of difference from forty two thousand.
If you want to, I have copies of the complete bids, if the board wants to go through them before you make a decision.
And who did it in last time is neither of these people, right?
Neither of these people have no interest in going back to last time.
Yes.
We have no interest either.
I just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything.
Plus Denise will probably quit. She has to deal with those people again.
Well, they stopped talking to her.
I believe that. Okay.
Guess we should just move forward.
Okay.
I didn't get any words. I have to make up my own words now. So I moved to award the statistical update to MRI for a total of sixty nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Statistical update, that actually, that's cool.
I believe that's what it's called.
I thought it was refunding.
Statistical update.
All right, make sure.
Second.
Any discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I will notify Lauren and Christian tomorrow. Under miscellaneous, the board had asked some questions regarding the roads and bridges CRF. I did talk to the DPW director. He said there's no difference if a bridge is a bridge, whether it's structurally based or culturally or covertly based. The state treats those the same. That said, he told me that cartlands, tunnel, snell, and old mill road bridges would fall under the state program. He said the second tunnel road project, and for lack of a better description, this is the tunnel road culvert by the former Randy Stevens residence, would not fall under the state bridge program, and the stepping stone culvert would probably not either.
Okay.
So we separated those two out.
So is the cost of those in the FTP reflective of us paying only, of which one of those programs it's in? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I don't have, I didn't get a detailed breakdown from him regarding that one.
Right, because if we were only planning to pay, what, how much do we have to cover? How much they cover a quarter?
Twenty percent.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that those numbers represent the full precise and not twenty percent.
Right.
So if we can check on that.
I can, I get him to give me as hard of figures as he's able at this juncture.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that wasn't the twenty percent number we were expecting. That changes things a lot.
I also spoke with Karen regarding the recreation commission and the replacement of the pyramid repair. She does not have an estimate for that yet. I was able to find another company that's US-based. We used a Canadian-based company that was extremely expensive. The last time we had to replace some of the animals on springs, for example. I think we've got a better price option through an outfit in Wisconsin that specializes specifically in municipal playgrounds and municipal playground equipment. So Karen's been in contact with them and is hoping to have a figure shortly for what it would cost to.
Okay.
Prepare that. Also, I don't know if the whole board is aware, but I had emails from the chairman regarding release of capital reserve fund money. And met with Ben and Taylor this morning, and that will be, the letters will be forthcoming.
Okay, good. I'll give him an extra four hundred and ten thousand, I think, for his cash flow issues.
Or in this lines.
He was appreciative of that, so.
Actually, our, our big hits, obviously, are, we have two school payments left, which are each over one point two million dollars. And we have the county tax bill, which is one point seven million, so. I, I did do a little bit of research, and in nineteen ninety four, the select board voted to indefinitely authorize tax anticipation notes. I don't think we need that, but I did check just to make sure. It had been a housekeeping item for the year, each year from the late sixties through nineteen ninety four. And I think it was Dwight Barney who made the motion in nineteen ninety four to make it indefinite. So you have that option. If you get into trouble in the future, D.R.A. told me it didn't matter when it was passed. If it's indefinite, it lasts until the town votes to rescind the authorization.
But I guess check in periodically with Ben to find out how he's doing. He should be okay, I think.
I, I think we'll be fine if we get these out, and we've got a all hands on deck effort to get the tax bills out.
Tomorrow?
Starting, well, starting tonight.
We're starting tonight.
I'm gonna reach out to Scott Mar. She's on vacation, but he's going to do what needs to get done.
The paperwork.
And then tomorrow, the clerks are coming in.
He has a laptop, and Shannon and Linda will be in tomorrow.
Plus also, when we send them out, the mortgage companies usually send in their check payments relatively quickly, don't they? They don't wait till the end.
They do. Sometimes they send in two or three, and we have to refund them. That's not uncommon, but you can refund them later.
Yeah, that's true.
I will need to round up two board members tomorrow to get signatures on the warrant.
Well, if you can get on P's, you can, you can come get me.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't know. When will we available? We don't know.
Yeah, I'm happy to come to you.
Can we go in the morning to you?
You can't get on base.
But can you?
Well, you want me to come out of the base?
Well, how does that work?
We need to come out of your base.
Is there an office? What time are you leaving? What time are you leaving to go to work tomorrow?
At seven o'clock. So, can we do it after work?
Well, the clerk's office really wants the warrant signed before they start.
Before they issue the tax.
But if I promise that I will sign it when?
No. I'm leaving my house at eight thirty, so if you can get to my house before eight thirty, I can sign it. Otherwise, I won't be back till the afternoon. Okay.
Can I check you at your office if I need to?
Right.
I'm not sure, depending on how fast Scott turns things around.
I'm probably leaving about eight thirty.
Okay.
From the house.
Well, I will contact everybody as soon as I've got the document. If I have it tonight, I'll let you know, and I can be in here tomorrow at six thirty or whatever time we need to be to get it done.
Well, just let me know when it's done. If you want to run to Newington, I can meet you outside the gate.
Figure it's done early, you can give me a call at the house.
Okay.
I used to do that before. I used to police chief use the cop I'm looking for the whole time.
He turned on the light.
We can drive really fast.
Yes, exactly right. People thought it was, oh, I saw something interesting going on at the house again.
Okay, other than that, I don't have anything. I do need to talk to the board in non-olig under A.
Okay. All set down? All right, anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
No.
So I move to accept the consent agenda presented. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
That's why I want things to be signed. That goes with this. I was interested in showing.
All right. Old business, the regional fire collaboration working group strategic plan. Questions? Anything? Discussion?
I like it. We should move forward.
Agreed.
Okay, so I move to.
So we have to do it.
The regional fire collaboration working group strategic plan. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. So if you can let Connor know that we passed it, that would be very good. All right. Any new business? There's nothing listed, but no. All right, two As? Yes, two As. So I moved in, enter, not vote the question, no answer, I say, nine one dash A colon three, Roman number two, section A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. McCourts?
Yes.
Ms. Thornton. Jeez. Ms. Hawthorne?
Yes.
Or Mrs. Hawthorne, or whatever you want to call him. God, but be yes. Motion passes. What can I call? Late for supper or?
Late for supper.
Well, no. Ms. Hawthorne's fine. It sounded like I was gonna say Ms. Thor, and I forgot who that was.
There's no response actually. Well, you can say if you want.
Really? Hawthorne? Does she like Hawthorne?
Yeah, she doesn't like Hawthorne, so I think it's just she's trying to say Hawthorne. It's not coming out right, right? She also told me when she turns eighteen, she changed her name to Kev Cody, so.
I like that.
Yeah.
...